Councilmember Stoffordin. Councilmember Ravel.
I'm here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hidakakis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Winn. Councilmember Winn Harris. And Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
And Mayor Bis.
Here.
And Councilmember Burns.
Here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. The first item on our agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which I have none. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Luksdow, City Manager. I'd like to invite our Economic Development Manager, Paul Zalmasak, up for a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Okay, thank you, members of the City Council. The last few months really have -- let me take that back. The last few years have really brought this 1989 song to mind. And forgive me, because you'll have this kind of earworm in your head for the next five minutes as I present. If you don't know the reference, I'm going to ask Anderson to play the song right now on the overhead. But there's been a series of headlines of businesses closing in Evanston, and it hasn't felt good. There's been anxious emails and conversations, social media posts, some directly to me. What is your plan? Businesses need financial help. Provide us with your action plan. I think I skipped one. No. Here's a quote from a public comment in a newspaper with my name spelled incorrectly, but that's okay. It's a hard name. We're moving to Wellmet. Evanston is a city of transients. There's a lot of negative feelings right now in the community, and we have to address it. It's serious. We have to listen. Zelzimak, once again, is going to tell you that our vacancy rates downtown are only 15% when clearly they are 35%. Again, and again, a comment, the four-lease wasteland. I am going to tell you that actually our office market conditions, we have an 11% vacancy rate. The trend numbers are actually, we have declining vacancy rate, declining availability rate. Availability rate, by the way, is something we'll talk about on Wednesday night at Economic Development Committee. I'll dive deep into some of this data. Retail market, believe it or not, downtown Evanston retail vacancy is only 10%. Again, it comes down to the availability rate. There are some vacant spaces that are actually leased. I'll give you an example. Panera Bread has been leased for years. It's been vacant. Two months left on that lease. That space will become available. I'm asking for collective breath, or let's breathe and let's just work together to figure out a solution. This is happening nationally. New York Times headline, read this article. This is a story about San Francisco. Downtown offices are empty. Cranes shows Chicago, LA, Houston, New York, where I consider us in the Chicago market. Return to office, we are only at 40%. It's going to take time. We are not alone. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce is talking about the Great Reshuffle and how the remote work world has changed the game. It's a great study. Read it. Something that I believe is off everybody's radar, but we have a serious restructuring of our economy happening. This book, it's a long read, but I encourage you to read it if you can. It talks about what happens when the baby boom retires, leaves a bunch of jobs open that cannot be filled because there aren't enough people to fill them. Communities like ours need to adapt and be ready for that change. Again, the reports of our death have been greatly exaggerated and have happened numerous times. The city of Evanston has reinvented multiple times as the economy has restructured. I encourage the committee and the community to take a look at Chapter 10 and 11 of this book by Bob Teska, which talks about what? Old Orchard renovating itself. And here's a picture of the 2025 renovation plan again. It continues to happen. Déjà vu all over again. So what do we do? We come up. The City Council has already been planning for this. We have spent, or we will spend at the end of it, $250,000 on a retail district action plan citywide. This is a citywide, I just said that, it's a citywide business district study for each of our business districts. That is our competitive advantage. We have unique, train-station-oriented business districts that were created over 100 years ago. Authentic. Really what we need to do is enhance those with events and unique independent businesses. On the radar, if our community is in such rough shape, why do we have tens of millions of dollars of private investment happening here? These are all residential projects that are either underway or coming in the next 12 to 18 months, in addition to Northlight Theater. I said residential. There's also office. We have investment from an Oklahoma-based firm who bought the Hilton Orientin Inn and is spending tens of million dollars renovating it. UL's relocating 200 staff members here. Sorry. The Church Street Plaza development, this slide alone shows six new businesses that are going to be occupying with kind of a spring ribbon cutting that I hope to see Mayor Bis at. In addition, some restaurants have been announced, including long overdue, it started right before the pandemic, that middle image of a Zentley in the Second Ward over at Dempster and Dodge. This place is amazing. The art inside is a reason to go alone. Amy Morton has relocated and created a new restaurant, and there are others coming soon. And again, I want to point out some additional residential development recently opened or about to open. Upper left is a really important project at Howard and Chicago called Gateway. It'll have a coffee shop, perhaps, and other retail on the ground floor. The bottom left is a significant residential development on the Nissan repair facility on Chicago Avenue, Greenleaf. And the top right is the Main Street Vogue project. Vogue sold to a developer, if you recall. Vogue relocated to Hartree in the Ninth Ward. I think they're doing very well, and will have 150 people anchoring. Kind of a quiet spot on the west side of Main Street. Our next steps, really in response, I just want to make sure the community understands that we are on it. We have, Councilmembers and I have lots of conversations. Not all of them are public. We are really active in trying to come up with ways to address the downturn and our recovery. Some upcoming meetings Wednesday night. I'm going to spend a little more time on this presentation, give some background. I am trying to rush through it. I had a 50-slide presentation prepared. I'll do that Wednesday. Our study will be finished at the end of February, early March. I plan to present a work plan to the committee, Economic Development Committee, sometimes in March or April, with the input of the committee. We'll come to the City Council for adoption. We're still, I think tonight, I think Sarah Flax is going to talk about Harpa funding, prioritization, or reprioritization. We have several economic development grants, including a new one this year, spearheaded by Councilmember Kelly, called the Legacy Business Program, which is a retention effort of our kind of cultural and longstanding businesses. And then finally, I think there's a way, and I've begun this work with Sarah Flax and our Sustainability Coordinator, Cara Pratt, on how do we combine affordable housing, CARP, and economic development as kind of one initiative? And we have several ideas around that. So that's where I'm going to end. I'll open it up to questions if there are any otherwise. Please join us on Wednesday night at Economic Development Committee. I think seven of the council members are on that committee. So if there's members of the community that want to join media, please attend. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zelzimak, it was?
Thank you. It's not the first time.
Councilmember Reed.
I just want to thank you for this. And really, I think we need to do more of this, and so to really highlight that we're doing good. We're doing well. You know, we've got some really important development. UL, you mentioned, a whole host, everything up there is really important to highlight for our community, because I agree with you. There is, I think, maybe in a certain segment of our community, that things are falling apart here. But I think when we get out of our Evanston bubble and look around and look at other municipalities, both nearby and across the nation, we'll see that, one, either we're in a similar boat or Evanston's actually, in many cases, doing better than other places. And so I think it's important to highlight this and keep that in our minds, so we don't start to work from a place of deficit when we're actually in certainly a place where we need to be vigilant and need to ensure that we're doing all we can to support our local businesses. But we shouldn't be, again, like I said, operating from a place of scarcity or a place of desperation, because we've got a strong city with strong economic development happening here, and we need to continue doing the things that we're doing that are right, and we need to evaluate the things that maybe are holding us back just a bit. So thank you for this.
Thank you. I'll just echo the thanks. It was, I think, really important for us to hear this, and thank you for all your work on this topic. I will just quickly say, I think what we just heard is a really important point, backed up by your presentation, that there's a lot of great stuff happening in Evanston, and I think we need to be clear about that and name it and be enthusiastic about it. The other thing I would point out is that the national challenges that we are experiencing along with everybody else are serious. And the conclusion from that is not Evanston stinks. The conclusion from that is this is a national issue that's going to require smart local solutions, and I think we need to be at the forefront of finding those solutions as the economic transition continues. So thank you for all you've done and lots for us to do together.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalmasak. Appreciate that. I look forward to your presentation on Wednesday night. Next up, I wanted to provide an update on the Black Employee Group report and our response to that. Councilmember Harris and I met with the group. I've met with the group multiple times, including on December 13th, where we committed to bringing forward an update at the January 23rd City Council meeting. And just wanted to share some of the items that we've completed. We did put forward a 60-day initial roadmap. We presented that last month. We did bring forward, and it was approved in December 12th, at the City Council, admitting the $200,000 for fiscal '23 for training, outside consultants, and related items. We fully expect to return to City Council later this year to seek additional funds for our initiatives. We have secured regular bi-weekly meetings with the Black Employee Group, myself and Councilmember Harris. We're meeting every two weeks on Tuesdays. We have listening sessions that will be starting later on this month with Dr. Gila Logan for employees to share concerns and the issues they have. We did set up several weeks ago a complaint email address for staff members to send an email if they have concerns about retaliation or repercussions as a result of their participation in the Black Employee Group. We did have two complaints come through. We addressed those immediately and resolved them to the satisfaction of those employees involved. Some additional items, we had 19 city staffers attend in mid-December the Beyond Diversity Training at Evanston Township High School that was led by Dr. Marcus Campbell and Pat Savage-Williams. We all collectively felt that it was very impactful and powerful, and we're grateful to attend that training. We're looking to bring similar training to directors, managers, and supervisors as well. We've consulted with outside experts, including the YWCA's Equity Institute staff. We've had multiple communications with all city staff and multiple city council meetings. The Employee Group recently identified, when we met with them last week, they have identified in particular some of their highest priorities, including pay disparity issues, and a review of HR, and 360 or similar performance reviews as some of their highest priorities. Other things in progress, right now, we're reviewing consultants and firms for HR, DEI, and legal assistance. We're doing that in consultation with the Employee Group, so that we have their endorsement, and we feel that we've selected outside experts and vendors that have credibility with the group. Councilmember Harris and I have reworked the city's response to tie more directly to the group's recommendations, and we've shared those draft responses with the group and received positive feedback last week on that. We'll be sharing that publicly later on this week. The Equity and Organizational Performance Manager position has been posted. We've been receiving a number of applications for that position. We also are in the process of working on an employee satisfaction survey that we hope to launch to all city staff shortly. We've created a new page on the city's internet that managers, directors, and supervisors will update with any training opportunities, professional development, and other items, so that there's full transparency for all city staff on those opportunities. Some of our next steps include finalizing the HR, DEI, and legal assistance. We want to identify finalists and begin interviews for the equity position. We'll also be posting the HR Recruitment and Retention Specialist position that was approved in the most recent city budget. We're going to be rolling out DEI training, as I mentioned, for directors, managers, and supervisors, and eventually all city staff. We will also post the Lakefront Report with all the different steps the city has taken since that report was issued last year and our response to that report. We will also have a public dashboard of our progress with all the different initiatives and projects, so people can see in near-real time our progress. And then also, we have a lot more work to do, and we want to increase the pace at which we're doing it. So we're hoping with the additional outside support that we'll be able to increase the pace at which we're moving. And I just want to take another opportunity to say thank you to the group for coming forward, to sharing their concerns and their efforts and time and energy to make our workplace better. And also a special thank you to Councilmember Harris, who's been invaluable and extremely supportive of this process. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Stowe? Councilmember Harris.
Sorry. It's like getting dressed in the morning, taking a mask off. I just want to say thank you as well for the confidence. It has been, I think, a worthwhile union, working together and working with the committee. Not many times do you have a group that has been disenfranchised that's willing to work with you and show you the ways in which to do things and to provide the city the opportunity to work with them. So I'm very pleased to be part of that. I'm very impressed with, no more peace, with the city, both sides of it. So just thank you for the opportunity, and this is a journey. There is no ending point. We are committed to working our way through this forever and ever and unfolding other groups and issues as we go.
I just want to echo the thanks. I think, I want to echo what Councilmember Harris said, for this group to come forward and to offer not only their concerns and frustrations, but also their time to help us do better is really a gift to the city, and we're going to be better for it. So I want to again thank them for approaching this really, really critical work in this spirit. Thank you, Councilmember Harris, for doing, you know, if I can just be really blunt, doing one of the hardest things a council member could be called upon to do immediately upon joining the council. It's really remarkable, and I certainly appreciate it tremendously. And thank you, Luke. The same thing. I know that this wasn't something that you thought you were signing up for, but this is what the city needs to have done right now, and you're clearing your calendar to make sure that this takes the priority that it deserves. And again, we're going to be better for that. So thank you very, very much. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I have no communications. I forwarded all the emails we've received today.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comments. This evening, we have roughly 10 people seeking to give public comments, so each will be given three minutes. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person, and so that will begin with Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Tim Guimond, who will be followed by Ray Friedman. Got it. So then the first speaker then will be Tim Guimond, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Bennett Johnson.
Thank you very much for letting me speak today. I spoke to a sports economist today at the University of Chicago. He's one of the most preeminent sports economists in the country, Alan Sanderson. He's been in the game for decades, probably 40 years. And I asked him about the, he's aware of Northwestern's study of their proposed new stadium and, I think, 10 or 12 events. I'm not sure what the number is. And he said that it's likely overstated by an enormous amount, by a factor of 10. So in other words, he hinted, or he suggested that the 3.6 million in additional tax revenues to the city of Evanston annually is overstated by a huge amount. And in other words, the study needs to be looked at. Why is this? It's because of the way they conducted the study using multiplier analysis, which is extremely flawed. I wanted to give you an example he gave me today of these kinds of studies, and it's not completely analogous, but it's interesting. In 2015, Boston was proposing to put on the 2024 Summer Olympics. You can imagine, it's a huge investment in the city to renovate or create new venues, hotel rooms, you know, new hotels, all kinds of things. You would expect to have an enormous boost to the economy. But Boston and the governor of Massachusetts asked Allen to investigate what the economic impact would be of holding the Olympics in Boston. And his team found out, after working all summer on the problem, that it would be a loser. They would actually lose money by having the Olympics. They also looked at the 10 previous cities that held Summer Olympics, and each of those cities, using their analysis, also lost money. So you have this big investment, you have a lot of money coming in. It crowds out money that's already there. It crowds out economic activity that's already there. It also substitutes for other entertainment dollars that would go towards other things. People fled the city because of all the people coming in.
15 seconds.
Thank you. The net effect is negative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Bennett Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me, first of all, to sit on your four-hour goals meeting a week ago Saturday. I received the three-page printout of the 10 goals outlined, all of which were excellent goals. I have only two questions concerning these goals, whether it be three goals narrowed down to or 30 goals, doesn't matter. The first question is, what is the plan on achieving these goals? Second question is, how will you measure the success or failure of each of those goals? We need to see the data from the last four years on the last six goals identified, and what was the success or failure of each of those. You are correct, Mayor Bis, that this cannot be successful without significant input from your residents, and so far, we don't see that happening. Residents are being left out of the discussions and the processes. You have plenty of input available here for free, outside the 850 or so employees that you have hired, let alone the studies and the consultants. Not even allowing residents to finish a public comment and being very selective about who can speak for more than three minutes allowed. And on Saturday, the 14th, there were only three people speaking at public comment, and you decided not to allow those to finish. Two out of the three people ran out of the three-minute time slot of the 45 minutes allowed for public comment. Really? Again, you're following the letter of the law while violating the spirit of the law. Please change the course of action here and lead us on a path of success. What's the plan? How will we achieve it? How will you measure the success or failure of each of those goals? Thank you very much, Ray Friedman. Second ward. Or you can call me Roy.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mr. Bennett Johnson.
Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza. I'm from the Ninth Ward. I want to speak on economic development. I was the first head regional director of the Office of Minority Business Enterprise, now called the Minority Development Agency. I also worked as head of the economic development for the city of Illinois and in the private sector. Of course, I'm quite familiar with business. And one of the reasons I did it, of course, I had a close associate named David Vega. The whole point was to help minorities become economically viable. And I have two problems that I want to call to your attention. One is A8, I understand in the Hondan Strategic Partners are talking about waiving minority participation. That is ridiculous, because we have a chance, with this huge economic giant coming into Evanston, to raise business people, minority business people and women, who will become more viable and have a more viable life in Evanston, and the city of Evanston will benefit directly from it. So I think this is ridiculous, that this group is being asked to get the minority thing waived. On the contrary, they should be getting it increased and become effective. The only other thing I have is A9, the Harley Clark thing. I think it's important to realize that, in the same sense, Charles is a very competent and skilled businessperson, and it's another opportunity for, again, the city of Evanston, providing with a lease so he can go forward on the Harley Clark project, which will benefit not only him, but all the citizens of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to those who signed up online. Only one person signed up online to speak in person. That is Kenneth Prosky.
I'm going to give everybody a handout after I'm done, in case I don't finish. I'm Ken Prosky from the Seventh Ward, and I'm here to comment on item A8, which I believe has been tabled, the Hondan Strategic Partners proposal. Besides the current proposal from Northwestern, there are, I want to make you familiar, with many other options that deserve consideration in the discussion of economic benefits and costs. Let me take this off. Can you hear me better now? Sorry. In case you were not aware, every other university in the nation today is taking a completely different approach, more practical and less ambitious. In the Big Ten, 13 of the 14 stadiums that were originally built were built before 1929. Ryan Field, 1926. Northwestern claims Ryan Field is too old and costly to renovate, yet over the years, old Big Ten stadiums have received 73 major renovations over the years in rebuilding, including three now underway at Purdue, Nebraska, and Wisconsin, and they're all older than Ryan Field. Only three stadiums have been rebuilt. Indiana and Maryland replaced tiny stadiums that and Maryland replaced tiny stadiums that had seating for only 5,000 to 20,000. Minnesota tried to share a facility with the Vikings and Twins, but eventually they moved back to and built their own facility on campus. On a national scale, there are now currently 22 stadium renovations underway, projects. Of these 22, 19 are renovations and modernizations. Only three are new. All three remarkably are stunning luxury facilities with a capacity of 35,000. Two of these cost $420 million and $310 billion. Northwestern and Ryan Field, $800 million, double the cost. To me, these findings strongly suggest that Ryan Field could be extensively renovated or even replaced for half the cost. Evanston, Northwestern, and the Ryan family would be proud to call it home. And it would be far more consistent with the scale of what is occurring at other universities. Most of us agree, including me, Ryan Field needs an upgrade. However, given Evanston's limited infrastructure and urban density, shouldn't we be evaluating the economics of a more affordable, less intrusive, and more community-friendly facility that doesn't require concerts, doesn't require private events to make the project financially viable? Thank you for your time. I have all the data to back me up here, and I can easily, if that's okay with you, pass it out.
Thank you very much. We now move to the online speakers, beginning with Eric Passit, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton, and then Priscilla Giles. Mr. Passit? Looks like Mr. Passit may not be in the Zoom, so we'll begin with Carlos Sutton, who will be followed by Priscilla Giles, and then Tina Payton.
Good evening, members of the council and the mayor. I would like to comment on the delayed discussion and delayed action for the small landlords of Evanston. It seems to me that when we look at the American Recovery Act, that other businesses and other agencies have been given a distribution without having to go through all of the hoops that you're asking us to jump through as small landlords for a minimum amount. I think it's ridiculous that you should ask us for three years of our income tax to prove that we've had a loss, yet you have no difficulty giving $50,000 to businesses on Main Street. You have no difficulty in giving grants to restaurants in our community that does not provide any housing. I'm very disappointed that the city does not have a commitment to address the needs of all of their citizens. The American Recovery Act affects all Evanstonians. Even people like me were adversely affected. And to see all this money going into businesses and other organizations that did not have half of an impact on their income as a person like me is almost a slap in the face. And our double standard, that I think the city should no longer try to perpetuate on our citizens. We stopped redlining, I think, but I think we ought to reconsider and bring up immediately to vote and distribute this money to small landlords without all the strings attached. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Priscilla Giles, who will be followed by Tina Payton, and then Alan Moy.
Thank you. The American Recovery Act funds, I thought, were meant to serve all the residents of Evanston, yet they seem to be spent on studies for which groups with true needs have been pleading for more years than anyone on the council has been seated. Do we need all these studies? Or any? This council can remove the smokescreen that covers the true needs of the city. There is a saying that is, who doesn't serve to serve doesn't serve for anything, or serves for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Tina Payton, who will be followed by Alan Moy.
Good evening. As many of you know, Payton Properties has been providing affordable housing in Evanston for over 52 years. Tonight, you will be discussing the small, medium landlord funds of $500,000 or $15,000 each. Notice that it's a discussion, not an agenda item. You have been discussing same for over a year. But you are also discussing HODC in Mount Pisgah, which was held in committee and continued to February 8. Why did the Housing and Community Development vote yes in 10 short minutes for a continued project to receive $4 million? With this on the table, you have blocked me and others from receiving any money from TIF. Who do you know that has provided affordable units in one building for over 52 years that's in the TIF? The city staff has sacrificed this town by backdoor deals. That's why some people need to start wearing an orange jumpsuit. Funny how many of the same people, like HODC, receive millions of dollars year after year, while others never get an opportunity to receive grants of the same caliber. Fairness, equity, transparency, honesty, trustworthiness are all adjectives the city of Evanston is not. I'm still waiting for the mayor to keep his promise to help me, which was now over a year later. Also waiting for Paul Zamlozak to send me the information so I can apply for the TIF, and not the measly $15,000 that you just can't stop talking about. Black landlords matter. Black lawyers matter. Black lives matter. And I matter. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alan Moy.
Hello, council members. I appreciate the time and opportunity to speak. I'm choosing to speak about the pending discussion and pending provisions around the cashless ban. I myself am a local business owner. I'm the owner of Vietnam Nam, a Vietnamese-based restaurant on Church Street. We opened our store in the summer of 2017. We've been in business in Evanston for seven years. Believe me and truly understand that, I understand there's ramifications with cashless bans, I said cashless procedures. And everything has a butterfly effect nonetheless with business decisions. But coming from a business where we absolutely did accept cash, starting when we first started in this town in 2015, I recognize also, just with my intersectionality of my background, like I understand, having come from Wall Street and working in banking, practices around cashless procedures can also be tied and linked to systemic issues and discriminatory practices with folks not having access to banks. With that experience I've had, whatever exposure I've had, I would argue that the true systemic issues needing to be addressed around access to bank accounts and signing people up and support with local banks, that to me is a really real big solution here at the forefront. Not yet another mandate or procedure that would otherwise inhibit and continue to add costly measures to business owners. I have a four-point quick list of just sharing more insights about what we go through as business owners to have to count cash. One, being a coin shortage and just the circulation issues in this country. In this pandemic, we continue to not have ample supply. So from a literal standpoint, there are not always access to these coins that we need to operate with cash. Security and safety arguably is the number one thing that I really should emphasize in this conversation. In my six, five years of having a storefront, we've had one break-in, at least a half dozen incidents of people stealing and taking tip jars. We've had an incident where three people organized a scheme to take money out of my cashier's hands. This presents a major safety issue when cash is known to be on site. There's also security issues when having someone from your team take cash to and from a bank. And if they are seen by others outside of your restaurant or business in this case, regardless of type of industry, you are going to be a target. The third point I have is around labor and the expenses involved. You ask any restaurant owner, business owner, you are spending at least five to a dozen-plus hours literally counting cash before service, after service. You are counting cash in between. You are counting cash for deposits, and the reconciliation with all that. This racks up to become several hundred dollars a week in labor over the course of a year. This could be tens of thousands of dollars just to literally count cash. And that doesn't count necessarily, even also the additional miscellaneous expenses to have professional fees, bookkeepers, accountants, people to help you reconcile those books based on cash deposits. And then lastly, the same expense, the last expense related to this is that you could also have counting errors. So in the modern age, I would really focus on this conversation being about, how do we address as a community and a city around the idea of signing people up in banks and working with banks and financial institutions to support individuals who have otherwise been discriminated against? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. I want to circle back to the one person who did not respond when called. Is Eric Passit now in the Zoom? It looks like he is not, and so this concludes public comment for the evening. This brings us to special orders of business. Would someone care to make a motion on item SP1?
Yes, I will move item SP1, ordinance 13023, amending portions of Title IX, Chapter 5, general offenses of the city code.
Is there a second?
One second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 13-023. Councilmember Hadakati's seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you. This is coming before this body. This is the second or second time, I think, this has come around. We've made a lot of progress, had a lot of good conversations with Sergeant Sofier, and Chief Stewart, and Janelle Hart, and then Council Cummings, as well as Councilmember Burns have all been a part of discussion here. I think this makes a lot of improvements from what was previously before us, while the ordinance previously before us, I think, you know, aligned with the values of this ordinance. This ordinance, I think, gives us better ability to track what offenses are, you know, are being violated. Whereas previously, both possession of cannabis and possession of alcohol were under the same code. Maybe I should take a step back and say what we're voting on here, which is an ordinance that amends certain offenses, particularly relating to possession and consumption of cannabis and alcohol in public. Consumption of alcohol and cannabis remain illegal in public with this, if this ordinance is adopted. I'm sorry, consumption of those items remain illegal. Possession becomes legal in certain circumstances. Possession of cannabis will follow state law, which this ordinance has been updated to reflect. And possession of alcohol will mostly reflect state law. There's one place where there's a bit of disagreement here, which is whether or not possession of a previously opened container of alcohol can be possessed on a sidewalk, or an alley, or other public ways. Certainly, in this ordinance, possession of open containers would still be prohibited at parks, at beaches, at many other public places. And this would allow folks to, you know, if you are taking a bottle of wine and you're leaving Wine Goddess, and maybe there's a tasting event, and you opened your bottle, you'd be allowed to walk down the street and either put it in your trunk, or you'd be able to walk down the street to a BYOB with your previously opened bottle of wine and not fear criminal, any criminal interaction with law enforcement. If I can ask Sergeant Sofier a quick question before my time is up?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So, is there, I think there might be agreement that mere possession of an opened container of alcohol in and of itself is not inherently problematic, and that it's more of a precursor to a potential disturbance in public order? Is that, would you agree with that statement?
To a degree. I think that it is a precursor, but it often leads to many of the disorderly type offenses that we get called for, not just downtown in that public space, but other public spaces throughout the city, at many times with many long-term issues that we've worked with many council members here tonight through those wards. So, yes, you are correct to a degree that sometimes it's an issue, sometimes it's not. But when it is an issue, it's a difficult one for us to resolve.
Certainly, I appreciate that. But so there's agreement to some level that it's not inherently problematic, but it's a precursor to behavior. Behavior that is, it is currently illegal for someone to be intoxicated in public. Is that correct?
There are ordinances against intoxicated pedestrians in public.
And certainly disorderly conduct, whether you're intoxicated or not, but certainly that could stem from intoxication, is illegal, correct?
Disorderly conduct is illegal, that is correct. I would like to take the opportunity, since you're asking this question, to simply state that our goal in, through the response from the police department in the council packet, the point here is that we'd like the opportunity to ensure that before there are disorderly acts occurring where the police do need to respond, and it's disruptive to local businesses, to residents, to visitors, and other stakeholders, that we don't get to that point. And by leaving the ordinance as it currently stands, which is the one point of contention, as you've brought up, that we're talking about, allows the police department the option, if we cannot gain cooperative engagement with an individual, that we still have the ability, if necessary, to cite for that open container.
Thank you. And I'm closing out, and I'm sure my time is coming to an end. So, you know, again, this is, you're saying that you want, the police department wants to be able to use this ordinance to prevent an offense of the public order from happening, which, you know, kind of jokingly, but serious, I've mentioned to some of my colleagues, it seems like we should be treating the actual offense to the public order and not going off in an almost minority report-like, trying to prevent crime before it even happens, before someone commits an offense to the public order. And so, and I can't think of another ordinance that is similar to this. I mean, what I have thought of that is similar to this were loitering laws, where, you know, loitering in and of itself was not inherently problematic or inherently an offense to the public order, but there were concerns that with loitering, that folks, you know, could be involved in drug activity, or could be involved in gang activity. And we found that here in Illinois, you know, just blanket loitering laws are not allowed by law. And so, you know, to me, I think making this simple change would still, to clarify, would ban alcohol, open containers at public beaches, at our public parks, and in our public buildings unless there is authorization from the city manager. I think still gives us the police department the power that it needs to enforce our community standards. And I'll remind us that currently, you know, we allow folks to consume alcohol at sidewalk cafes. We want to allow folks to consume alcohol at Arrington Lagoon in the near future with the hopeful cafe that will be located there. And so I think as our community standards are shifting, you know, this one, I think, small point of contention, and I see my time is certainly wrapping up now, I hope that we can move forward with this and give it a trial. If it's something we have to visit down the line, I think we can. But I think we can move forward with this with the police department having what they need to address issues of public disorder and public intoxication. Thank you.
Councilmember Saffron, followed by Nusma.
I was just going to call the question.
Councilmember Saffron moves the question. Is there a second? Councilmember Saffron calls the question. Councilmember Reed, seconds. I'm going to try to get this one right for once in my life. It's a non-debatable motion, so now we vote on whether to end debate and have the vote. Is that correct, Mr. Cummings? Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to call the question?
Councilmember Saffron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Sure.
Yes.
With four voting in favor and five voting against, the motion fails. Was that the end of your comment, Mr. Councilmember?
This is for introduction, correct?
It's right.
Okay. All right. Is this introduction in action?
No.
All right. Okay. I just ask that everyone be mindful that we have full agenda plus executive session.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the work that the council members and staff have put in. This is a good example of how far we can get when we put some heads together and collaborate. So thank you, Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Burns, Chief Stewart, Sergeant Sofier, for doing this good work. And I think we're 95% of the way there. But I do share some of the concerns raised in the memo with regards to the public possession section of this ordinance. the memo with regards to the public possession section of this ordinance. And I'm concerned about the downtown business district, the Main Street Business District, which are in my wards, same argument, you know, applies to other wards as well, about quality of life. And the issue in my mind is not sidewalk cafes. The issue is not people coming home from the Wine Goddess with, with half a bottle. The issue is folks walking down the street that are drinking, and if they put that bottle down, they're all of a sudden in compliance with the law. And I don't want to take away tools from the police department that will allow them to make our business districts and make our neighborhoods safe and warm and welcoming for Evanston residents, for Evanston visitors. So I do want to add back the language to Section 2C with regards to open containers, and I do want to add the, the highways, streets, alleys, sidewalks, parkways and public lots to that particular section. So I will make that motion. If I have a second, I'll, I'll send that out right now.
Councilmember Nusma moves to amend item SP1 by adding the phrase highways, streets, alleys, sidewalks, parkways and public parking lots to the end of, let's see, what is this? Nine dash five dash 10A2B? Do I have that right, Councilmember?
Nine dash five dash 10A2B.
Councilmember Ravel, seconds. Councilmember Nusma sent this to me this afternoon, which is why I'm, that's what I'm reading out loud. My understanding is he'll be sending it to the whole council as we speak. Is that correct?
As soon as I can get the computer to cooperate, yes. CC at City of Enson goes to everybody?
Correct.
Okay. I am hitting send now, and it's going through.
So it's, it's arrived in my inbox, presumably others have it as well. Councilmember, sorry, are you done, Councilmember Nusma?
I'm done for now.
Councilmember Burns?
This question is for Sergeant Sofier, if you wouldn't mind. So I've heard it communicated today that this is a tool that we don't want to lose. Could you explain, give a scenario of how this tool is used?
Absolutely. You get a call of an individual or a group of individuals who are publicly drinking upon the sight of the police car prior to the police officer making contact with that individual or individuals. Those individuals then put their beverages down or hide their beverages, and because by way of not seeing them consume it, if this were to pass as it stands, then we do nothing, right? We can of course go and initiate a conversation if someone's willing to have that with us, but we cannot take any form of enforcement action or encourage someone to throw out that open alcohol, get rid of it so that that public nuisance is not continuing in any of those areas. So again, as it stands, right now, we can. If we go and we see someone that's got an open container of alcoholic beverages sitting beside them in a public space, we can go and say, hey, that's against city ordinance. We're asking you to throw that away. If we get another call and have to return, there are enforcement options such as that local ordinance citation. But by way of the proposal, if we saw that open container of alcoholic beverages next to an individual, a group of individuals, we could take no action until we see them drinking from it. And it's common sense that when the police are there, they're not going to do so. And oftentimes, we do get returned calls in many public spaces that, hey, the moment the officers left, and we get this with many disorderly acts, right? It's not just public drinking. Someone turned the music back up as soon as the officers left. Someone started blocking an alley or rode away as soon as the police officers left. And in, in this instance as well, very often, as soon as the officers left, people started to drink again in the public space.
The example of noise you give, I think in those examples, the way I understand it is, in those situations, that's why the neighbor actually has to sign off on the ticket, or at least that's my understanding, that the neighbors are encouraged to, or might even, it may be necessary for a neighbor who did hear the music to sign off on the ticket. And if our responding officers did not observe it themselves, they, they're not supposed to write a ticket, which is part of the challenge that we run into on the east side of the fifth ward. And I think that's different here where, you know, we're not asking a witness of, of this to just say, hey, did anybody see this person drinking, although they set it down? Did anybody see it? And if you did, you can sign this ticket, and we can issue the ticket. We're just, we're, we're making a, almost assumption about possession, which really leads to my next question. I don't know, maybe this is a legal question. Is that possession? If somebody sets something down and you don't see them setting it down, is that possession? I mean, this is a legal, I mean, this is, this is literally a fundamental, this is a legal matter we're discussing. So, because I'm just trying to make sure that that is even the right tool to use. I know it's just a ticket, so it might not end up in court, but could somebody challenge that? Is that considered possession if somebody sets something down? I always assume that this was, if it was on their person, like they weren't drinking it, but it was, I don't know, you, they slipped it in their pocket, but you could see it somehow, but it was on their person, so you knew it belonged to them. But if we're just talking about something that's set down near them, is that considered possession per our local ordinances?
Good evening, members of City Council. Mayor Biss, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe, Nicholas Cummings, Corporation Council. I don't believe that our city code talks about specifically defines what possession is. However, the, Sergeant Sofier can correct me if I'm wrong. State law with respect to possession includes constructive possession. This is often used in terms of drugs and gun cases because oftentimes, someone trying to shed actual possession in an effort to elude arrest will have then constructed possession because it's within their grasp or within their reach. I don't know if that's so much the issue here. I know that when we talked in our last discussion all together, we talked about defining what an open container is, but defining possession is much more nuanced and much more detailed than I think that our code contemplates currently.
Okay. And then just to continue to walk it through, so they were saying that the, because I think no matter what in a sense, or even if we left a portion of this, we could encourage our officers to be able to say, hey, can you move along? Even if we didn't, you know, we could, we could leave enough of this to where it would authorize, it would allow our responding officers to say, hey, can you, you know, move around? But, but taking it a step further towards, so you were saying that a ticket is enough to get someone, let's just use the scenario of somebody homeless for, as an example, that the ticket alone is enough to change their behavior, that we, you go the first time, you tell them to move around, they don't do it, you come back, and we need this on the books because a ticket, we now give this person a ticket, let's just say this person is homeless. We're seeing that is enough to, to, to get the behavior change that we're looking for. We, we're seeing on, on the street level that people are moving around once they get a ticket, and we're not arresting people. That's not the way that we're able to move them away from one of our grocery stores or somewhere else where they're drinking, but that the ticket alone is enough to get them to move.
I will say, in my experience working here 20 years, that once enforcement action becomes an option or something, the police department needs to exercise as opposed to saying, hey, you got to go. And then we leave, that we oftentimes do gain compliance by that way. Is it 100%? No, that, that is correct. But it is oftentimes when it's clear that the officers are going to enforce the law that is on the books, and we make that clear to the individual, that if we can't gain compliance the other way, which truly, and I want to make clear to everybody here tonight, that is the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal isn't to have to take enforcement action, but that should remain an option in the cases where we're having to deal with disorderly behavior that is disruptive to our public spaces, again, to our residents, businesses and stakeholders, that will make our job more difficult, not having that ability in those limited instances.
And we're not talking about disorderly though, because disorderly, as Councilmember Reed said, has its own place in the ordinance, and we can act on that. No matter what, you know, is triggering it, we can act on if somebody is behaving disorderly. We can issue a ticket just for that. So we're really just talking about somebody that's probably not too disorderly, but maybe there were calls that this individual was disorderly, and we didn't, we're not seeing it. We don't see it, we don't see him drinking, we don't see him acting disorderly, and so we need to issue this ticket to try to move him along, is what I'm, what I think is what we're saying. So that, that information is helpful. And then last question, are we ever arresting people in these situations, or is it always a ticket from your experience?
Local ordinance arrest is an option, but overwhelmingly, unless there is another issue at hand as part of that encounter in terms of aggressive behavior, somebody making threats or making physical threats to someone, overwhelmingly, it is a ticket.
Oh, and then last question, I promise on this is, do you think that makes sense? The, the example I gave with the noise ordinance, again, my, my experience is neighbors have been asked to, to be a witness to it if, if an officer couldn't observe it. If that's the case, if you agree that that's what we do with noise, don't you think with this situation, we could also ask people to be a witness to this behavior as well? Or could we not do that?
I believe it's a little more fluid than a noise issue at just one location, and I don't believe it's completely apples to apples. You know, I will just say with respect to Councilmember Reed's comment about minority report and future, future crime-type behaviors, that again, we're seeking, common sense would state that if somebody is drinking continuously in a public place, just not when the police are around, that there is a definite opportunity for disorderly issues to arise. And we respond to that extremely often in a lot of our public spaces. Unfortunately, that's become more often something that the police department has dealt with over the past couple of years. So while I'm not looking to state that that's a, you know, the example that Councilmember Reed gave, again, if common sense is that someone that is going to continue that behavior when the police aren't there is going to lead to more serious issues in that public space, it's in our collective interest to try to stop that from occurring in the first place. Again, preferably with not, without enforcement action, but to have that there if necessary.
And I only ask that because I know most of our requests to enforce around any of our code violations is complaint-driven. And so I would imagine even these situations that are happening around the city, that somebody is calling, and so in the same way a resident calls about a neighbor, you know, partying in their yard, couldn't we just say, hey, can you stick around, you know, to provide witness to this in the same way we would if a neighbor called about a noise issue in their ward? So just a question, to me, that they, they seem very much so similar, and, and which is why I'm trying to see why it seems like both are kind of treated a little differently. But those questions are, those responses are helpful. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to sort of ask for a little map of the territory here, and just to make sure I understand what's happening. This is something that is a referral made by Councilmember Reed. There was, it was made clear several council meetings ago that there was a disagreement between the police department and the council member about what the best course of action was. There was, this was tabled for a while to give time for some negotiation, maybe a couple times even. And so if I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like Councilmember Reed and the police department still haven't reached total agreement. And then there's a amendment that's been proposed by somebody else, Councilmember Nusma, I can name you, you're right there, which is, is that like an attempt to?
An attempt to close the loop and get this done.
So, so that's an attempt to close the loop and get this done. Is, does the, is the police department supportive of this as it would be amended by Councilmember Nusma? I don't want to put you guys in the spot because it feels like, there's like an added dimension to the negotiation at the 11th hour, but I think it might be helpful to all of us to hear both from Councilmember Reed and the police department if this amendment does in fact close the loop or if more time is needed.
On behalf of the police department, that amendment would close the loop. We've made really good progress with every other portion of this ordinance, and that is the only remaining sticking point.
Thank you. And your time is up, Councilmember, but obviously someone's trying to amend your, your proposal here, so I'm going to give you another minute to share your thoughts on the situation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, yeah, I, I do agree that it closes the loop, obviously, the police department said it themselves, so suddenly it closes that loop. You know, again, this wasn't a, the main focus of my initial referral, but since we're here, I think it makes sense to clean this up. And again, I, I want us to focus on, and just if I can ask a quick question of Sergeant Sofier. If someone, if you witness a open container of alcohol and you approach someone and they're not consuming it in front of you, would an open container of alcohol and the appearance of intoxication be sufficient for you to initiate a field sobriety test or some other method to determine whether someone is publicly intoxicated and then enforce that law against the person?
No, if somebody's not demonstrating outwardly disorderly behavior, we would not be setting tests for a pedestrian that's not otherwise acting in that manner to try to make that determination.
I'm saying that someone has an open container of alcohol and they are exhibiting behavior that they are publicly intoxicated, which would then lead to they actually are a disturbance to the public. Would that be sufficient for you to initiate a test and then hold them accountable for the public intoxication?
Again, we don't.
I just want to say, I, I'll let you answer, of course, but I wanted to go back to you to, to share your position, not do another follow-up Q and A. So your minute's already up, so why don't you do an answer, then we'll hear Councilmember Reed's position, and then, then your time will be.
Certainly.
Extremely up.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. No, we do not give sobriety tests to pedestrians.
But you could. Okay. So on this, again, what I'm imagining here and why, I think specifically the language around the sidewalks and the highways, it would then turn this into you can't put it in your trunk, because if you're putting, as in alignment with state law, putting a previously, like a quart bottle of wine into your trunk, you'd be along the public highway, thereby it would be illegal again for you to possess that. And again, if you are at Wine Goddess and you want to go down the street to a BYOB taco place, and you have your bottle from Wine Goddess, where you, you know, did a wine tasting, you know, walk just down the street to another restaurant or another business in Evanston, why should it be illegal for you merely to possess alcohol in that situation? And if we are going to, and I'm close here, two seconds, if we are going to say that we're going to turn a blind eye to all the folks walking out of Wine Goddess and all the folks walking out of other places with their open containers of alcohol, but we're only going to enforce it against certain people, then we are inherently creating a law that just creates a class or caste system and discriminates against people who are in, who are from a cultural background or economic background that we don't see as belonging to this community, while turning a blind eye to that same behavior in folks that we think fit whatever, you know, another demographic in this community. I think that's, it should be, that's a shame that we would codify that into law, and hopefully, I believe the police department has the tools they need to deal with the actual offense against the public order. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
I call the question.
Councilmember Nguyen, so just to be clear, the motion on the table is the amendment.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen calls the question. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilmember Saffron, seconds. Again, this is a non-debatable motion. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to call the question on Councilmember Nusma's amendment?
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
With nine voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries in the, so the question's been called. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to amend ordinance 13-0-23?
Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 13-0-23 is amended. Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role on the motion, on the, on ordinance 13-0-23 as amended for introduction?
Councilmember Saffron?
No.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda-Caddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries an item, an ordinance 13-0-23 as amended, has been passed for introduction. We'll see it here once again through, three weeks from today. This brings us to item SP2, which is a presentation and discussion. Would someone care to make a motion to enable that discussion to begin?
I move item SP2, ARPA update funding commitments and unallocated balance.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the item SP2. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. I believe Ms. Flax has a presentation, is that correct?
Good evening, Sarah Flax. Good evening, Sarah Flax, interim Community Development Director. I wouldn't call it a full presentation. It's just a summary of where we are, and a chart that got kind of misaligned in the packet, so it was probably pretty hard to read. When we were looking at the last meeting of last year, in December, we had a number of things potentially coming to City Council for ARPA funds, and if we had approved them, all the ones that were potentially on that agenda, we would have allocated more funding than we actually have. So we had to take a little bit of a brief stop. Since that time, one of the largest of the requests, which was from the Reparations Committee, was withdrawn. So that actually has given the Council some flexibility on what to do with the remaining funding, and I think it's important to get your feedback at this time before we bring anything back to City Council. So a real quick summary, we have an unallocated balance of $5,751,423. The remaining projects or programs that are in the pipeline, if you will, are five hundred and, they're in two categories, in negative economic impact, and the one is in replacement revenue. Negative economic impact includes $550,000 for Whole &amp; Free Foods. That went through the Economic Development Committee and was coming to Council for approval. That was, it's a significant new manufacturing facility that would create not only food that is free of the top 14 allergens for people who need that, but would also generate approximately 50 jobs, and the company is very much working to hire low-income people who do not have great job opportunities, so that's that. From the Housing and Community Development Committee is a $500,000 request for the Small and Medium Landlord Assistance Program. That, in addition, there is a $58,000 request for the Mather Workforce Development Program, which I believe still needs to go through Economic Development. And then the last item, which is not under Economic Development or under negative economic impact, is a consideration of purchasing Meridian barriers for the Parks and Recreation Department. They are movable barriers that can be used when there's activities in the streets, and can withstand cars and vehicles trying to possibly run into the crowd. That request is $612,822. The reason, even though we could argue that it could go under negative economic impact if it were helping with street fairs and things like that in summer, is it would be considered a capital equipment investment, and Treasury won't give approval in advance like you're supposed to get if you're buying capital equipment, so we just would recommend putting that under replacement revenue. So those are the things that were pending, if you will. Staff has a couple of things we would like Council to consider. One is investing in affordable housing, one of the primary needs that was identified throughout the community outreach. Housing and Community Development Committee did review a request for funding for the 44-unit project at 1815 Church Street, and a proposal will be coming forward to Council. There are two possible ways to fund that. One is using a combination of Affordable Housing Fund money and TIF. There are two sort of separate parts to this. The non-housing portion, which is retail commercial and the parking, would be funded by TIF, a million and a half. The remainder, two and a half million for the housing, we recommended, or one of the sources, one of the ways of funding it, excuse me, would be using a million out of the Affordable Housing Fund and a million five out of the TIF. But because of the availability of ARPA and the change in the, from the final rule, which originally said you couldn't do long-term loans, that's been fixed. They actually, the reason Treasury did not want long-term loans was Treasury does not plan on monitoring this program after the end of the performance, which is the end of 2026. But Treasury and HUD got together, and they figured, wow, if we layer it all in with stuff that HUD's already monitoring, we're good. So that's really why it makes it a very easy use of funding to layer in with a low-income housing tax credit project. So that's one of the staff proposals to think about. And of course, the formal request would be coming at a later date, following it getting through its entitlement process. Business district improvements. We just heard from Paul about the need to actually implement some of the recommendations of that study, and with a particular focus on some of the small business districts in our lower-income neighborhoods, the Hill Arts Business District, Church Dodge Emerson, and also Howard Street east of Asbury. But that doesn't preclude also looking at the downtown, which is critical. So those are the things we would propose or suggest that be considered. We just like feedback from the Council, so that we are effectively bringing you things that you're interested in seeing us bring.
Thank you very much for this really very helpful summary. Are there any questions? Councilmember Saffron.
Yeah, hey, Sarah, we've talked about the potential of citywide crosswalk improvements. Like, what would we have to do to make that potentially ARPA-eligible? Would it have to be citywide? Would it have to, like, what would be the way to do that?
That is one of those things that, nobody has a perfect thing on that, because they really want to look at certain areas, but I honestly think that there are a couple of ways we could do it. We could separate where the crosswalks are and put some of it under, you know, the, addressing the needs of just under-invested neighborhoods, the QCTs, that sort of thing, and putting the rest of them under replacement revenue. Or we could put the whole thing under replacement revenue if that were easier. There's a possibility we could put it under, you know, just improving neighborhoods and stuff. I, I kind of don't want to get monitored and have somebody picking something like that apart, so I would rather avoid anything that could.
Yeah, I don't want to get too cute with it.
But I think that, you know, that is, exactly, but that it's definitely, the money could be used for it, obviously.
Thanks. Councilmember Nusma, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for managing this extremely complicated process. I'm not sure how many pages of federal regulations you now know by heart, but we're up there in the thousands, I'm sure.
I don't think I know them all by heart, though.
So if you're asking for feedback, and my feedback is kind of in alignment with what you're recommending, but I would emphasize business district improvements, particularly downtown and Main Dempster Mile, as areas of particular concern to the, not only the Fourth Ward, but, you know, downtown is for everybody in Evanston, so it's not just a Fourth Ward issue, and hopefully the other downtown council members would back me up on that. Affordable housing is clearly one of the City Council's priorities, based on a goal-setting session a couple of weeks ago. But as you pointed out, there's TIF money available and other funds available for affordable housing as well, so let's just make sure we're tapping all sources of revenue and using ARPA where there might not otherwise be revenue. And one last pitch for CARP and climate action, whatever we can do, whatever we do in whatever category needs to keep CARP in mind, and if there are some more direct ways we can use our remaining ARPA funds directly towards climate, towards climate action, I would be in favor of that as well.
One other note, there is a lot going on in participatory budgeting, and we don't know yet what requests are going to be coming out of there. Now, remember our allocation deadline, but we have to have it in writing, is the end of 2024. So it isn't absolutely imperative that everything be allocated either, I just want to bring that up. And even though there is TIF funding, there are also a lot of demands on the TIF that can't be funded with ARPA, so it's a balancing act.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Hara-Caris, followed by Ravel, followed by Harris.
Thank you. So I want to be, one, also, just first want to add my thanks to the course here for you and all the work that you've done to manage this really, what could be a full-time position in and of itself. In fact, we interviewed somebody who had this as a full-time position for City Manager, and you're taking this on, on top of the duties that you already have, so thank you for bearing that for us all. So with that, I do have a few questions. So I was just having a conversation with one of my colleagues in the Alderman Library, and I want to verify a few things since they're not in here. So with the Health Department, there is, we gave about $900,000 to the Health Department for contact tracing, correct?
It was $575,000 for that, and they withdrew that. That was withdrawn back in September.
And that's back in the balance here?
It is, let me get the other spreadsheet.
And then on top of that, while you're going to the other spreadsheet, also, you know, we gave your department, I believe, or someone, $900,000 to, that's the $900,000 number, to hire, I believe, a consultant to help, and so, and I don't believe we've used that, so has that funding been returned to the pot there as well?
So here's the unshrunken-down version. So you can see that up at the, well, we need to go back to the first page, that's the second page of the, there we go. We have youth violence intervention and the living room as underneath public health, so that's why it's that total. And then you can see the negative economic impacts, things that are already in there. There's the guaranteed income, Aspire, Magaw YMCA, One Stop Shop, and that one is that weird split, because it's really a million, but half of it is put under replacement revenue.
No, I appreciate this. I'm just specifically asking about the two expenditures. So I guess, am I hearing that the $500,000 from the Health Department has been reassigned to other uses?
Right.
To the youth violence intervention and the mental health living room?
Right.
Okay, that's where that money has been reassigned to, and then the $900,000 for the ARPA consultant?
That's down farther, with the ARPA administration.
That has been reassigned to other uses?
No, that's on the second page. There it is, Administration and Other, and so that is a million in there. There's $900,000, which is for staffing, which is various people who are actually working, including some of the participatory budgeting people. And then there is also a $100,000 for the Northwestern contract, that is the participatory budgeting structure, if you will.
My understanding is that participatory budgeting was to be paid for out of the, and Matt and I sat down and did the budget together, that that would be paid for out of the $500,000 that we set aside for participatory budgeting. We put 3.5 aside, $500,000 was for Administration, and then the rest of it for the actual funding. And I mean, heck, I'm happy to give more money to PB, but I just want to make sure our accounting is.
There is a $500,000 of the three and a half million, there is $500,000 that is right above that, it's always hard to see on this, right above the reddish one, which is the Meridian barriers. That is the direct costs. We put the staffing actually under the ARPA Administration, and the $500,000 right now is all of the other ancillary costs, which likely some of that were.
So the $900,000 has not been, okay, that was what I was looking for. And I would also assume that, you know, when Matt and I went through the budget, I specifically wanted him to create one where everything was self-contained within the $500,000, and I think if we're going to take the money from, I mean, it's, you know, one or another, but if we're going to take it from the $900,000, there will be money left over in the $500,000 for ARPA, or, you know, vice versa, so I just.
Right.
Okay, so that's, that is helpful. And then lastly, I will close out here with response to some of my colleagues that went before, maybe only one went before, but, you know, we've given, we've paid quite a bit of attention with ARPA dollars to our downtown. We've given millions and millions to businesses, both downtown and just the business community generally. Can someone remind me of what we've spent on ARPA for affordable housing? Have we made an ARPA application?
The One Stop Shop is our biggest, is our ARPA affordable housing right now, and that is to.
That's aligned with.
Improve the energy efficiency, and that's a pilot program, but to try to figure out how to pull all the future funding together.
But that's to, I mean, I get that, it's maintaining affordable housing by, you know, making sure that houses are suitable for people to live in and meet our CARP goals, but have we spent money on creating any new affordable housing?
No, we haven't committed any other ARPA to that at this point.
And, and so, you know, I would like us to look at using, you know, if not the entire balance, a good portion of the balance at actually supporting the creation of new affordable units in our city, which we have not done to this point, and we know that one of the largest impacts of the pandemic was around housing, and not just the energy efficiency of housing, but around people actually having housing to live in. And so I think it would be a shame if we got through this entire process, spending, you know, $43 million almost, and we did not use any of it to either build new affordable housing or support the expansion of affordable units.
I apologize. One other housing thing, which is a big one actually, was the Magaw YMCA, and that is an unusual one, because it is a type of housing that there really aren't any other good sources for, but that is a $3 million.
And I think that was a good use of money, but if anything, we actually decreased the number of affordable units there. Again, good use, and I think, you know, providing larger spaces is great, but thank you.
Councilmember Hara-Caris, followed by Ravel, followed by Harris, followed by Kelly.
Hi, Sarah. So as one of the newcomers, I know I wasn't around for the divvying up of the funds and the different amounts for the different categories. I was wondering, has there been consideration to possibly spend more towards the public health? I know, you know, we have violence prevention there, but that's, I just wanted to chime in and say that that's something I think we could probably spend more money on. I know I've gotten some feedback from people that, you know, the pandemic, there's a lot of, you know, more mental health issues in our community, especially, I think, among young people, and I think that might be something to consider as we look to spend that last $5 million.
We haven't had any specific requests coming forward, but we know that mental health services are a continuing need, and we would have to think about how to best, you know, what, where the gaps are in our services. I think that's something that the Social Services Committee might be able to provide some insight on, too.
And I have one last, final thought on that. If, and is there, if there are any things that we've funded so far that we've seen that could use, we've seen it's working and it could use more funds, I think that'd be useful for us to know, like, which one of these programs are like, this is done great, you know, maybe we should, you know, use some more money towards that.
Well, guaranteed income would be something that I think we're seeing is working well, and that might be something that we would want to consider expanding or continuing. There really is a lot of evidence that when you give people money, that they can control how to use it to improve their lives. They're really pretty smart about how they do it.
Would you mind if I gave a little addition to that answer as well, Councilmember? I don't know that we can say that this is yet up and running and working great, but one area that I think is responsive to both parts, both of your questions, is the living room, where we've been very conservative about asking for more than necessary because we've been really aggressive about seeking external sources of support, and successful to some extent, thanks in large part to Congresswoman Chikowski and Commissioner Sufferton, and hopefully more to come. But depending on how some of those pending asks go, that may be an area that we will need to come back and ask the council for some further support.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Harris, followed by Kelly.
Well, Mayor Biss, thank you very much for that comment about the living room, because certainly we do want to be able to move forward with that, and we are needing to complete our fundraising budget in order to be able to move, really move forward with the renovations that need to happen to the, the house itself. So that would be a high priority. I appreciate Councilmember Herakakis's comments about mental health dovetails also with the living room. And probably I'm going to just defer to Councilmember Harris, who I'm glad to see has, you know, put her light on, too, because there have been a number of recent funding requests from the West Evanston TIF, and I'm concerned that there's not going to be any funds left for projects that you, I believe, have in mind. So I would support taking ARPA funds for that segment of the HODC project.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Kelly, followed by Burns.
So first of all, Sarah, thank you so much. Numbers is not what I do, so I appreciate all of this work. I know TIF came up, but we understand that the TIFs have underperformed and that it is not that, it's not, it's not as much money as we had once thought and hoped it would be. So I want us to take that into consideration, as my fellow councilmember said, in that there are some projects, hopefully on the horizon, that would have some additional funding dollars to help support. There was a time gap between when the seat was filled, so there were some projects that were there, and I'm hoping to be able to catch up and really support and do some innovative things in the second ward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns.
Thank you. I would just ask, I think, like, with regard to the $575,000 for contact tracing, or like the $900,000, that for transparency, I'm not sure that that's reflected there. And I think that need, we need to vote on how we reallocate that. I don't think it's sort of like, you know, should be just necessarily sort of water-seeking its own level, where it, it doesn't get spent, and we're spending it on something else without realizing that we are reallocating. So I would just ask that anytime we are returning funds, that it be explicitly stated, and that we actually vote on how to reallocate that funding.
That was actually discussed at the September meeting, and we said that the money was, you know, that the, the Health Department did not see that they needed that money, so it was returned. So it was sort of returned to the unallocated pot. So in essence, you have the ability to do that and have been doing that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just don't think that that was ever, I don't recall that. I know I emailed back and forth with Mr. Opo and towards the end of the year, the start of the next, this year, I think it was towards the end of last year, and he only just determined, I mean, I, I just, I don't think that was brought to our attention. I think it's, you know, just like the $900,000 for the, I think it should be explicitly stated, this has been returned so that we are reallocating those specific funds. Anyway, that's just, I just feel like it was, it could be a little bit more clearly presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, for, to, to respond in, to Councilmember Herakakis about wanting to see commitment towards addressing our health disparities, in particular in Evanston. I, I think everybody up here has seen the E-Plan and all the data that's, that's come out of it, and a lot of the health disparities and inequities kind of center around specific census tracts around the community. And after looking at that, I know we, it's something we need to do every five years, and, which is why we, you know, submitted the E-Plan, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't, and I, and also our Health Director wanted to make sure that we, we don't stop there. We don't just have this report and not have a response to it. And so for the last several weeks, kind of been organizing with our Health Director, I reached out to him initially, and then we pulled in Director Flax and some community members to talk about developing an intervention similarly structured, at least initially, to the Universal Basic Income or Guaranteed Income Program, where we will put together a cohort of community members who are affected by kind of chronic illnesses that were identified in the E-Plan. And, and we would take them through a pilot, a year-long pilot, that doesn't just focus on one aspect to get healthier, but it focuses on both nutrition, but also fitness and mental health. And, and this would include members of our community from impacted census tracts, but also include members from outside those census tracts. We talked about also wanting to set aside some slots for young members of our community, and so potentially setting aside some, some slots in this cohort to include families, so that families are finding ways to get healthier together. And I'm really excited about this. It's something we've been working on. So I would, we are preparing a request. At some point, we haven't identified funds yet, but I think source funds, but I think ARPA will make a ton of sense, at least for part of it, maybe all of it. But I just wanted to respond to your, what you said. We are working on something. I think it's exciting, and we'll, we'll get a lot of information, we'll be able to track its progress by creating a cohort and really be able to, to track how people are progressing with their health. And I think we all came together to want to put something together that, at the end of it, really truly makes people healthier and, and puts them on a path to doing that. So I just wanted to put that out there, and we'll go through the committee process at some point. We're still in draft mode right now.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, Sarah, again, thank you very much for all your work, and we look forward to continued discussion and work on this important topic. This brings us to the consent agenda. Let's start here. If I sort of was tracking things correctly, a lot of stuff did not make it through APW, so what should be removed from the agenda for that reason?
Okay, so you can remove items A7, A8, and A9.
Okay. So A7, A8, and A9 are removed and will not be eligible for.
Right, they'll come back to APW, but.
Understood. Is there anything else that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
H1.
H1? So so far, we have A1, A7, A8, A9, and H1. Is there anything else?
A13 and A14 are moved.
Anything else? So we have A1, A7, A8, A9, A13, A14, and H1. Going once. Still seeing some paging through agendas. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda minus the items that were removed.
Second. Councilmember Reed moves passage of the consent agenda with the exception of items A1, A7, A8, A9, A13, A14, and H1. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and items, the consent agenda with the exception of the seven items just mentioned, passes. This brings us to item A1. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion here?
I'd like to move item A1, approval of the City of Evanston payroll and bills list.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage, excuse me, folks, sorry. Pardon me. Councilmember Kelly moves approval of the payroll and bills list. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Abstain.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against and one abstention, the motion passes and the payroll and bills list is approved. This brings us to item A13. Councilmember Kelly?
I was going to ask to move both A13 and A14 simultaneously.
Councilmember Kelly, would you like to do that?
Sure. I'd like to move item A13, Resolution 6-R-23 authorizing the City Manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Evanston and Evanston Police Sergeants Association affiliated with Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, and item A14, Resolution 7-R-23 authorizing the City Manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Evanston and Illinois Fraternal Order of Police.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves passage of Resolutions 6 and 7-R-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just, since we have our representatives from our police department here, I just, I just want to say thank you for your service, and this, I think, was an easy choice for the entire council to move forward with pay raises, particularly understanding that we are not in alignment with some of our neighbors, and our neighbors do not have the same complications that we do here. Both one of the, I think, and we're a community that is, is asking a lot of officers. We're asking our officers to be on the front line of a new model of policing, and particularly for folks who've been here for a long time. I understand that that can be difficult, but I'm glad that folks that are here, and Chief Stewart and, and others are embarking on that journey with us and, and doing the best that they can. We're all trying to do the best that we can. And so, and I just, lastly, just want to note, again, the, the difficulty here, both, again, like I said, with the diversity of our community racially, economically, but also, you know, and this happened a bit before my term, but we've had some really traumatic, violent events happen here where officers responded quick and without hesitation. And while I'm fortunate that I'll never have to witness that or watch the body cam video, this is something that officers here lived. And no amount of pay can compensate for that, but what I think we can do here is just show that we value the police department by increasing the salaries, maybe for negotiations, another time. I shouldn't say this, but I think, you know, our, our officers here maybe even deserve more, but this is a good first step. So, thank you very much.
Seeing no further discussion, with a clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, Resolutions 6 and 7-R-23 are approved, and the labor negotiations are resolved. Thank you so much to all of you for your really, really important work. This brings us to item H1. Would someone care to make a motion on item H1?
I will move item H1, Ordinance 2023, amending the city code, creating Title 12, Consumer Protections, Chapter 1, Cashless Establishments Prohibited.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Ordinance 2-O-23. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton.
I didn't turn my light on this time.
Oh, you turned your light on, I guess, to get recognized to make the motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Sufferton.
Yeah, same question from last time. Does anybody know how many businesses are cashless now? And Sue, not to put you on the spot, do you have any idea what the unbanked population of Evanston is? I mean, people, this would be a difference maker.
Let's, let me ask Ms. Lulback if you'd want to.
Sorry, Sue, I just thought you might know it off the top of your head. Okay, then stay where you are. Okay. I guess, if Paul Zama's still here, I mean, if somebody could just tell me, how many businesses are cashless? If we've done any research on that, we heard from one guy, I heard from another business, I have no idea what the number is. If anybody up here knows, tell me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Sufferton, I don't have an exact number. There are, we know of a handful, including Mr. Moy, who presented, he's owns Vietnam Nom. A picnic actually doesn't have a point-of-sale system in their space. You order food on an app. They don't take credit cards or cash onsite. You walk in and walk out, your salad. I think that's a growing trend. We haven't done a survey, we haven't really engaged outside of informal questioning.
Or, I don't know that I'm authorized to call on Sue, but, Sue?
Yeah, I'm Sue Lulback with Connections for the Homeless, and we serve several hundred people each year who live on the street, and I would say most of them are not banked. And then we also work with lots of people who, you know, thousands who call each year needing help with apartments. And I don't have the percentage of how many are banked, but I know that that is an issue with a lot of them, that, you know, if they want, the landlord wants direct deposit or something like that, it doesn't.
Okay. But you haven't heard?
I do not know numbers.
About, okay. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how many businesses we're affecting, how many people we're helping, if there's another way to do it. Does anybody know how much it would cost to put in one of the machines that would convert cash into a card? I don't, we don't know that. You know, it may make sense, if we're going to pass this, to have the city put those somewhere, and we could even explore adding a bonus to it. So if you put in $10, you got $11 worth of credit that you could use at a merchant. I mean, I just, I think without any of that information, it's irresponsible to pass this. It may be a good policy objective, but we don't know who we're hurting, who we're helping, and if there's a better way to do it than it's as proposed. So I'd encourage everyone, I don't think anybody up here knows how many businesses in their own wards they would be affecting, and I think they don't know how many people in their wards they'd be helping. And I think it's irresponsible to vote yes until we have that information, at least.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Harris, followed by Herakakis, followed by Nusma, followed by Revel.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that they, those lights came on at perfectly spaced intervals during the course of your comments, Councilmember, so you seem to have hit several nerves in sequence. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I, again, appreciate councilmember Saffronin's questions there. You know, we don't have a system for getting information from every business, whether they're cashless or not. You know, that's a difficult, the best we could do is a survey, and even then, we wouldn't have complete information. But we do know that this is a trend that is growing more and more. There are businesses like Amazon, Amazon Go, that are creating these cashless locations and other businesses. And I don't think, nowhere are we trying to stifle that kind of innovation, or are we trying to, you know, some folks say make businesses less safe. As you noted, this ordinance allows for the cash to, card kiosks to be placed in businesses and allow folks to continue to access the services there in a cashless manner. So that is certainly an option. As for the cost, there are many municipalities that have implemented this policy, one of the biggest being New York, or the biggest in America being New York. So certainly, this is a growing trend, and these machines are certainly available and certainly, you know, available at a price point, particularly as more and more cities are doing this, that is, that should not be cost prohibitive.
You don't know what it is. Cost prohibitive to who? A municipality? A business?
Let's, councilmember Reed, keep the floor.
Thank you. So, and then who does this affect? Again, that's another statistic, you know, these are folks who are traditionally the least connected and the least proximate to power and to our local government. So it's a bit difficult to get at some of these numbers, but what we do know is that from the ACLU and other folks who have studied this, that, you know, it's typically folks who are senior citizens, folks who are unhoused, folks who are undocumented. And so this will impact those communities the most. And I think, you know, this, this policy makes, makes sense for Evanston, makes sense for our businesses, and will not have a negative impact on our community, as it has shown not to have a negative impact on other communities unless folks can show otherwise with these policies. So thank you.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Herakakis, followed by Nusma, followed by Revell, followed by Kelly.
So I hear what you're saying, oh, there we go. I hear what you're saying and the data, I think we could use some data, but we understand that banks were created for those who had it, that they're disenfranchising payday loan businesses that we've put out of town because they prey on those who can't get the credit. They're looking at APRs of 28% to 30%. We have banks at Fargo who have been sued billions of dollars because they're disenfranchising and stealing money from people. So there are people out there that aren't homeless, that just can't have banks, can't have mortgages, can't have checking accounts and credit cards because the rates are too high. So I want us to be conscious of that, that it isn't just our homeless population, it's a lot of disenfranchised people. And I want us to, I didn't know about the machines where we could convert money, so if those really do exist, that may be a way to go, but I don't know what those cost. I don't know what that would cost the city. But I think we have to be open to taking cash. People are talking about a coin shortage. I have three big water jugs. Anybody wants to change, they can come have it. But I think we have to be open to allowing people to pay the way in which they can pay.
Councilmember Herakakis, followed by Nusma, followed by Revell, followed by Kelly.
So I'm, I'm in agreement that we have to move forward with the cashless ban. I, I do want us to explore the other opportunities to provide some services to our unbanked communities here in Evanston. I did a little bit of research, and there are some businesses in town where you can load money onto a prepaid debit card that functions like a MasterCard. But that's something I'd like to see is maybe having some, some of those stations where you can, where the, you know, city can provide a prepaid card or a mechanism to load that at, you know, a safe, safe location, like, you know, the civic center or our libraries. But I do agree, we have to do some, we should do some more, some more background work to figure out how to implement that.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Revell, followed by Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I agree with the underlying objectives of this ordinance, I'm not prepared to vote for it as it's currently presented to us tonight. You know, as the representative of the 4th Ward, we've got a number of small businesses who have expressed, you know, serious concern with this ordinance, including small businesses where it's, for the most part, a sole proprietorship. We have one person, often a woman, in the building, and for reasons of safety, they are reluctant to, reluctant to handle cash. That does not even get into the COVID-era impact of, of going cashless for, for public health reasons. So I'm not prepared to move forward with this because of the impact it would put on small businesses, absent a fully demonstrated, you know, kind of quantitative analysis of what the actual impact is. One way I could get to yes on this is if we were to exempt small businesses in a similar manner to what we've proposed for the bag tax and make sure this, that grocery stores and pharmacies, for example, were, were not able to be cashless. But they're already, they already accept cash, and so is this, why make up a law to treat a problem that doesn't exist in that, in that case? So I'm not sure that's the best solution, but I am not prepared to vote for H1 as it is tonight.
Councilmember Revell, followed by Kelly, followed by Nguyen.
I think I'm just going to echo the comments from councilmember Nusma. I, I do sympathize with the need to, you know, make sure that, you know, people, our unbanked residents have an opportunity to, to shop and purchase what they need. I would be interested in the idea of at least starting with grocery stores and pharmacies and those larger establishments, which I think probably aren't, aren't going cashless. Yeah. So did this issue ever get discussed at the Economic Development Committee? Oh, okay. I guess I regret that we didn't have more conversation with our business community before it came to council.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Nguyen.
Thank you. I'd like to take advantage of this moment to let everyone know that we are having a presentation on financial inclusion and creating more equitable city by Amaya Poirier at our next, at our February Finance and Budget Meeting. And he will address, you know, measures such as this potentially, but also like, you know, providing a way to cash checks, maybe in the clerk's office, and just a bunch of other potential measures. So, but like Tom, I'm also interested in the data. I think it would be, it would, I would like to see some of that data, you know, I'm, just to have, to have a sense as to where we're at as a city with regard to that, with regard to the numbers. Even the businesses that don't, don't use cash, are those, are, would those be accessed otherwise by those who are unbanked? So I, I do think that the data would be interesting to see and worthwhile. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes, thank you. Like several other councilmembers up here, I've heard from a number of small businesses in the 3rd Ward who do operate in a cashless way and would, or would like to, because they find that it would save them time, they are sole proprietors, and they would feel a greater sense of safety. So like several others, I'm not comfortable with this at this time. I do understand the, the equity issues here, and I would like to find out more information from New York City and San Francisco and the entire state of New Jersey. I would like to know what measures they have in place that mitigate some of the, the issues that we've discussed here. So I can't support this tonight, though.
Since no one is requesting to speak for a first time, we go back to those who have requested a second crack, beginning with councilmember Saffronin, who has three minutes left.
I don't, I don't need all three minutes. I'm just going to say once again, voting yes without complete information in a city full of vacancies and struggling businesses that have GoFundMe campaigns is irresponsible. Voting yes tonight is an irresponsible vote. Voting yes once we have complete information might be the right thing to do, but voting yes tonight is irresponsible. So whoever votes yes tonight, I appreciate your adherence to your moral compass or whatever is driving you to do it, but you're not doing it based on any information or any sound policy basis. So again, a yes vote tonight is irresponsible. A yes vote later might be the right thing to do, but a vote tonight that is a yes on this is irresponsible.
Still, no one's requesting to speak for the first time, so now for a second time, councilmember Reed with two and a half minutes left.
Yeah, well, I, I, again, appreciate that. Some, I think a no vote is irresponsible. You can put it both ways. I mean, a no vote means that there are seniors, that there are unhoused people, that there are undocumented people who will not be able to access the same goods as other folks simply because they're unbanked. Again, and I understand the concern of folks who want more data, but I mean, we will never have the exact number of businesses in Evanston that are cashless because it is an unattainable number unless we went to every single business and asked them what it was. At best, we'll have anecdote, and we know that it exists here. And we'll, again, never have the information on how many folks are unbanked. Now, there are estimates that we can get based on national averages, and, you know, so that's, you know, something attainable. But the ACLU and other organizations have done a lot of research on this. As councilmember Nguyen noted, there are many cities and even a whole state who have implemented this. This ordinance that is before us was pulled exactly from New York. So if you want to know what measures they have in place, this is it. This is what they have in place to ensure that there is an adverse effect. And, and, and there has been nothing to show, and the folks who are against this, there've been, you know, this has been talked about for weeks, where is the data, the research, the report, anything that shows that this will have a negative impact, that there's an increase in crime, that there's an increase in, in, in robberies? Again, we, we live in the United States of America. Folks should be able to use American currency in order to access goods in our country. And the fact that folks are being more and more forced into the banking institution is not something that, you know, many cities across our nation are standing for, and not something that this city should stand for. And so I urge us to continue with a yes vote here, and, you know, if there's data that folks want, which is anecdotal at best, we can get that, but I think we need to move this forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma with three minutes and 20 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there is a way to get to yes, if, what I'm hearing from councilmembers who have expressed opinions similar to mine. So not a motion yet, but I'm wondering if it enabled to, you know, allow us to get to yes, if we refer this perhaps to the Economic Development Committee to take a look at so we can get some more, you know, quantitative input from the business community. I'm throwing that out as a suggestion. If somebody else has a different idea, I would be, I would be open to that. So I, if, I'll go ahead and, and make a motion to refer this to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to refer Ordinance 2-O-23 to the Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Saffronin, seconds. With 30 seconds left, councilmember Reed. Oh, wait, so hold on. There's, there was already a queue. Four people had put themselves in the queue. So the, in order, they were councilmembers Revell, Kelly, and Harris, and then those who are looking for a third crack are councilmembers Saffronin and Reed. So the motion on the floor, on the, the motion before us now is the motion to refer this to EDC. Councilmember Revell, do you want to speak to that?
Well, since I was struggling for an opportunity to do something with this motion, I, I like councilmember Nusma's proposal. And I was, I couldn't quite hear councilmember Kelly, what did you say? The Finance Committee was going to...
Oh, that we're going to be discussing financial inclusion. And, but I am also interested when we do, if we study this at Economic Development, to look at what Tom suggested, potentially having available throughout the city, these, you know, I don't know anything about these apparatuses, but it sounds like something that's worth exploring.
Yeah.
We'll be discussing this as a topic at Finance and Budget.
Well, just to wrap up, I, my, my comments have been answered by councilmember Nusma's motion.
Okay, then councilmember Kelly, did you want to, okay. Councilmember Harris, as your, your light was on before.
Yeah, it's still on.
So with 3:35 left.
Won't take me that long either. So when dealing in DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, you are, you are supposed to listen to the people who are telling you what their needs are. And the people that have sat up here today are people of color who've told you, this is what's happening. This is a reality. This isn't a make-believe, this isn't what we think. I went to a place last Sunday, and on the door it said, "No cash." And I was like, "Uh-oh, they're not going to be happy in a little bit," because I was confident that the city would pay attention to people who said that. Now, I am personally not one of those disenfranchised at the moment, but my family has been, my friends have been, people that I don't know have been disenfranchised by this movement. Is it cumbersome? Sure. Is it troublesome? Sure. But until we fix a nation which is riddled with hypocrisy, issues of disenfranchisement, Evanston can do their part. And before COVID, everybody took cash. So COVID cannot be the only reason now that, or one of the main reasons why we really don't want to handle cash. So again, when you're looking at a lens of DEI, the majority are those that have done the disenfranchisement, and I'm not saying anybody up here has done that, so I'm not saying my counterparts are responsible for that individually, but there's a system in place that is. And if we take advantage of the system that has disenfranchised and only listened to those voices, then that is irresponsible. And I think we need to think about that. But I do think with a little bit of research and a definitive timeline in which we say we bring this back, because we can hold this on and on and on and on, and we do that here, and I don't want to do that.
Councilmember Saffronin with two minutes and 15 seconds left.
Paul, do you have some sort of listing of businesses that's available to you?
Councilmember, councilmember Saffronin, yes, we have the business registration, it's, the cashless question is not asked on that, but we could add that.
But with the information, could you contact those businesses?
We could send out a mass email and asking people to respond to that. That could be a proxy.
Could you ask businesses to contact you and make a list of the businesses that do?
I prefer that we have a survey system so I'm not getting five hundred calls.
I feel like this information is attainable. And I think, you know, the example you used of the business that is entirely app-based, what happens to them? Do they have to close immediately when we pass this? Is there a, an amount of time they could have to come into compliance? Do they have to walk away? What, what happens? Are a business that, we saw, you know, Portillo's recently made their drive-through cashless, but their walk-in is cash available. Would that be in compliance with this? It's not a problem right now because Portillo's chose to be in Skokie. But I'm talking about businesses that are here right now that are cashless. How do we help them? Because the other option is vacancy. A vote on this right now without all the information is a pro-vacancy vote. And that's something we talked about that's a problem in all of our business districts. And Alderman Harris, I appreciate your interest in not having this go on forever. I agree. That's why it should have never come forward without complete information, but it did. So I think kicking it to Economic Development, coming back to the council with a full understanding of how many businesses that exist in Evanston today that we're affecting is the correct way to do it. Now, you can vote yes tonight if you think that's the right thing to do, and I encourage you to vote your conscience, but I don't think we're actually solving the problem that this thing purports to solve by voting yes tonight. And we're creating more problems down the road that are going to have to be dealt with. So if we measure twice and cut once, we're going to come up with a better piece of legislation. So I've used my time, it's the first time I've probably spoken through... It's the first time I've probably spoken three times on an issue in the entire time I've been here. But I listened to my colleagues earlier tonight talk about how to circumvent the prevailing Wage Act. Now they're going to lecture me about what's responsible when all I'm saying is make sure we get this right? I'm not even encouraging a no vote. I'm saying tonight is not the night to vote yes. And I'm done.
Councilmember Reed with 30 seconds left.
All right. Again, why is no one asked? I mean, are we going to send out a survey to every person in Evanston and ask how many people are unbanked? Again, why is the focus consistently on a certain class of folks who are, tend to be, business owners tend to be in the more privileged class of folks in our city? What is this information? If we come back and Paul sends out an email to however many businesses in Evanston and however many respond and tell us, what does that data change for us? What is, you know, if it's 100 businesses, it's 1,000 businesses, it's 3,000, I don't know what that data fundamentally changes about whether or not we need to protect people who are unbanked in our community. And, and so if anything, I think this needs to be kicked, not just, if we're going to kick this somewhere, it needs to go to the Equity Empowerment Commission. It needs to have a lens of folks who are looking out for average, everyday people and not just the interest of the wealthiest, most connected folks in our city who tend to be business owners in our community. Now, national averages show that about 4.5% of Americans are unbanked. So in Evanston, that means that about 3,510 folks are unbanked in our community. I know my time is expiring here.
It's expired.
It's expired. And so I, you know, if we're going to kick this to a committee, I urge a yes vote tonight because I think the information that folks are looking for doesn't fundamentally change anything. If anything, it gives those wealthy, strong interests another opportunity to keep the boot on the necks of people who have traditionally been disenfranchised. And I'm not going to stand for it. So this needs to go to, I would ask that if folks are really concerned about this policy and concerned about the real people on the ground who are most disenfranchised that this affects, that the motion would be amended to also send this to Equity Empowerment Commission to get insight there.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Revelled with three minutes and 20 seconds left.
Well, I think one of the benefits of sending this to the Economic Development Committee is then the committee can have a conversation with businesses about what, how, by going ahead and implementing this ordinance eventually, are there, are there things that we need to put in place to, you know, like investigating these cash-for-debit card machines? And, you know, is, is there anything that we should be doing as a community to make this change easier for those businesses that for a variety of reasons do want to go cashless? So I'm, I'm not looking to hold this up forever. I'm just, I'm looking for us to have a conversation with our business community and proceed as thoughtfully as possible. And I think Councilmember Severdon's question about, because we do have, I don't know, a handful, a couple of handfuls of businesses that are cashless. And so what, you know, how much time are they going to have to adjust? So I have just some questions.
Well, this may be the first time that you've spoken four times on an issue. Councilmember Severdon with five seconds left.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to Equity and Empowerment, Administration of Public Works for an investigation of how much these machines cost and if there's armed places in business districts that are on municipal property where we could install these machines and economic development.
Mr. Cummings, is that motion in order while there's already a motion before us to refer this somewhere?
Not quite yet. I think you need to dispose of the motion that's on the table right now, and then there could be another motion once that motion is disposed of. But it does sound like part of his motion is included in, unless he wants to amend the current motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to send it to get as many eyes on this as possible so that we can create the best legislative product for the residents of the city of Evanston.
I would entertain a friendly amendment to my motion. I'm not sure if it needs to go to A and PW, though. Perhaps we could have that conversation at Economic Development. I don't know.
Any, any committee you wanted to go to.
All right, so.
That's not a recipe for quick resolution.
So here's how we're going to do this. Councilmember Newsma is recognized to replace, to withdraw and replace his motion.
I will withdraw.
If he is so inclined.
Yes, I will withdraw my previous motion or amend my previous motion to refer this to Economic Development and to the Equity Empowerment Commission. Is there anybody else that we want to run it by? I'm comfortable with those two.
Yeah, those two.
Okay. End of motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves this item, that ordinance 2-0-23 be referred both to the Economic Development Committee and the Equity and Empowerment Commission. Councilmember Wen, seconds. Councilmember Reed's time is long expired, so I'm going to give you, I'll give you 15 seconds.
Yes, for clarity, I, I would love if, you know, folks who are referring this, particularly to economic development, what, can someone express? I understand that part of it is how many businesses? Can someone express, you know, the list of questions that you want or the data that you want? And then maybe even why? Why would the number?
I think, I think we've had a really robust discussion on this. I think the people have been very clear about their concerns. And I think that if there's, if there's a need for staff to work with elected officials between now and when that hearing occurs, that those discussions can occur offline. Is there any further discussion on this new, new motion? Councilmember Burns, for the first time in the discussion.
Yeah, no, I was just, I really would encourage Paul to be proactive and reach out to everybody because I know what Councilmember Reed is getting at. This will arrive at, at committee and we'll just be looking at each other like, all right, what are we going to discuss? We really need to have the data in advance, well in advance of that meeting so we can have a productive discussion at Economic Development. I think I'm the chair next month, too. So that's, is what I like, especially with NWEB. We have a lot of, we use our time in advance of the meeting to figure out exactly what we want to discuss at the meeting so that we could have a productive discussion, not only at council but at these, at the committee level as well. So I just wanted to emphasize that point. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris with a minute 45 left.
So I appreciate everybody wanting to get the information. That's what we're here to, to get the information. I also appreciate people telling me how I can vote. I know that. I just want to keep saying I understand that. So thank you. I just hope that we collectively inquire, get the right information, not just one-sided. Because as stated, businesses, they're already disenfranchised as much as the people who only have cash to spend. I would like to see the information. I think that is reasonable and to see what that looks like for those that are disenfranchised and willing to come forward and say that. And those who have businesses, how, how does it disenfranchise them? Because if it's just an inconvenience, then that's not big enough for us to turn our back on people who only have one means to pay. So thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the role on the motion to refer this item both to the Economic Development Committee and the Equity and Empowerment Commission?
Councilmember Severdon?
Yes.
Councilmember Revelled?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Wen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 2-0-23 is now been referred to the two previously mentioned committees. This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Severdon?
Nope.
Councilmember Revelled?
I'm, I'm having an in-person ward meeting a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, January 31st, here at the Civic Center, room 2404. The first part of the meeting will be discussing the idea of a special event, resident-only parking zone around the stadium. And then following that discussion, we'll have a sort of an open discussion with residents about their, their comments about the proposed stadium. So that's for Tuesday, January 31st. And then I'm having another, my fourth special topic meeting is Wednesday, February 8th. And that's a Zoom meeting. There's a Zoom link on the city website.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes, eighth ward, ward meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM. The meeting is virtual. The link is on the city's website. We'll have Director Ogbo, I believe we'll have Director Ogbo there to give some local updates and just general public health updates, particularly with rats in alleys. So looking forward to that.
Councilmember Herakaris?
I'd just like to encourage everyone to participate in the participatory budgeting meetings that are happening this week. I will be at the Spanish language event at the library on Saturday, the 28th, starting at 11:30 AM. There is a focus group for the participatory budgeting at 6:00 PM at the lib, at 6:00 PM that same day for the African and Caribbean immigrant community in Evanston at Robert Crown. Then I will be having a board meeting the first week in February. And let me get this date right. I don't have the date. Anyway, that's it.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Coffee in, first ward, coffee and conversation, nine o'clock at Colectivo this Wednesday with a special focus on public safety. So please join us at Colectivo, nine o'clock Wednesday. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Just wanted to send congratulatory messages to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority last year, I mean, I'm sorry, last week. They all celebrated their Founder's Day. Three of the four traditionally and historically black sororities. And then Phi Beta Sigma, one of the black fraternities. The second ward will be hosting our ward event tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen?
Yes, I will have office hours on Thursday, February 2nd from 7:30 AM to 10:00 AM at Brothers K. And the next third ward meeting will be Wednesday, February 8th, at Lincoln School, starting at 7:00 PM. That's Wednesday, February 8th. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. February 4th ward meeting will be Tuesday, February 7th, 7:00 PM, in-person, Robert Crown. And February office hours will be Saturday, the 11th, from 10:00 to 12:00. I am going to say this one is going to be at Reprise Roasters on Main Street. And the listing on my council webpage will be revised forthwith.
Councilmember Burns?
Evanston's redistricting committee invites you to participate in a joint fifth ward and redistricting committee meeting this Thursday, January 26th, at 7:00 PM to provide input before the local ward boundaries are redrawn. You can attend in-person at YU, 1911 Church Street, or virtually. The redistricting committee has decided to redraw the ward boundaries to create an electoral map that ensures each person's vote carries roughly the same weight, regardless of where they live. This is particularly important because the distribution of populations have changed over the years. And the fifth ward is roughly 705 people below the average. Public engagement is an important part of the redistricting process. The committee is doing ward-specific listening sessions because of a methodical and structured approach will allow us to have more productive discussions. Focusing on one ward at a time ensures we're considering all of Evanston. So again, Thursday, January 26th, joint fifth ward, a redistricting committee meeting at YU. And also you can attend remotely. Thank you.
That concludes call of the wards. Now, Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to Five Illinois compiled statutes 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding the purchase or sale of real property as well as the approval of minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in Five ILCS 120/2A, Sections C5 and C21.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the city council resolve itself into an executive session to discuss the aforementioned items. Councilmember Wen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Severdon? Councilmember Revelled?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Wen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and at 9:51 PM, the city council resolves itself into executive session to begin immediately in the council member library. Thanks, everybody.